I'd like to call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the right of our liberty and to the protection of the nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And in the interest of everybody getting a chance to see the new faces, Andrew, when Andrew calls the roll, please stand up to say, "Yes, I'm here." "Aye," however you want to. All right, now the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Lauffer. Supervisor Lauffer is here. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Pat Breslin is here. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland is here. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score is here. Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Steen is here. Supervisor Shackleton.
Here.
Supervisor Shackleton is here. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork is here. Supervisor Wilsey. Supervisor Wilsey is here. Tom, Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jetson is excused. Supervisor Bouchon. Supervisor Bouchon is here. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear is here. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier is here. Supervisor Calabrese.
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese is here. Supervisor Lyon. Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor Story. Supervisor Story is here. Supervisor Vander Mullen is joining us online. There he is. Supervisor Burnt. Supervisor Burnt is here. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan is here. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas is present. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow is here. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert is here. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Wolf. Supervisor Wolf is here. Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Hartung is here. Chair McCullough.
Apparently.
Chair McCullough is also here.
All right, so next up is, well, that was the introduction part of that. Next up is swearing into the Board of Supervisors. If the clerk will administer the oath.
Everyone, please rise. Just the supervisors, sorry. Raise your left hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of county supervisor.
Of the office of county supervisor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I do so swear.
I do so swear.
Congratulations and welcome. Please make sure that before the end of the evening that you sign your oath of office, which has been placed in front of you, and return it to me. If I don't have that by the next meeting, you cannot be seated. So please make sure you return that.
All right, next up is the election of the chair and the vice chair. And my apologies for the appointments getting out a little bit early. That's, of course, contingent on whether I'm reelected or not.
That was my fault. Apologies. I'm used to putting the appointments list out.
Little ahead of the skis. So the format of this is secret nomination and then secret ballot on paper. And I will need two people to collect the ballots. Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Calabrese.
So while Supervisor Headland and Calabrese are coming forward, they'll be handing out a nomination paper. This is for the chair of the board. Feel free to write the name of the chair of the person in which you want nominated on the slip of paper. And then, once completed, Supervisors Calabrese and Supervisor Headland will come around and collect the nominations. From there, the nominations will be tallied and read by Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Calabrese. And after nominations are complete, supervisors who have been nominated will have the option of accepting the nomination or declining respectfully the nomination. From there, we will cast a vote by secret ballot and have subsequent votes of the, for the chair until a chair has been elected. Supervisor Vander Mullen, if you have a nomination you would like to put forward, would you send me an email?
Okay. I don't think I need to nominate anybody. Would I be voting the same way?
Yes, we'll have you vote. If you don't want to nominate anyone, that is completely fine, as well as the rest of the supervisors. If you don't want to nominate an individual, that is fine. But yes, Supervisor Vander Mullen, when we are ready, I will ask for your emailed vote.
Okay.
Thank you. If you have your nomination complete, feel free to raise it so the supervisors can come around and collect them. While they're doing that, if you would like to sign your oath of office and bring it forward at this time, that is a perfect opportunity in which to do so. Yes?
Thank you, thank you.
This is the not at all fun card.
You were just here to watch. I guess it's raining out again. Yeah, so just. Yeah. The names.
Okay, first nominee, Mike Kinnear.
Thank you, but I decline.
Second nominee, Larry Bjork.
Thank you, and I accept.
Third nominee, Kelly McCullough.
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, having received nominations from Supervisor McCullough and Supervisor Larry Bjork, having both accepted, the next process will be that Supervisors Calabrese and Supervisors Headland will hand out a ballot for chair of the board. Please make sure everyone only gets one ballot, one ballot, one vote. And then they will collect them and tally the votes. Yes, Supervisor Vander Mullen, this is a perfect opportunity for you to send me an email with your vote, if you have not already done so. And your vote has been received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not yet.
Once your ballot has been completed and a name filled out, please raise your ballot. And Supervisors Headland and Supervisors Calabrese will come collect it. Vaughn, please don't forget to vote. And I am writing down Supervisor Vander Mullen's vote on this particular blue ballot that I've received via email.
It's 28.
That should be 28, that's right.
We'll see if it adds up to 28.
You have eight.
I have 20.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right. Supervisor Larry Bjork had eight votes. Supervisor Kelly McCullough had 20.
I guess I'm in the hot seat again. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I do apologize for sounding like I'm underwater. The whatever is blooming right now is killing me. Same process for vice chair.
So the same process will happen for a nomination for the vice chair of the board. You will first submit a nomination. You do not need to submit a name for nomination if you do not wish. But otherwise, that opportunity is available to you on that teal piece of paper. Once it's completed and you have a single name listed as your nomination for vice chair or a blank ballot that you do not wish to cast, feel free to raise it. And Supervisors Headland and Supervisors Calabrese will come around and collect them.
All right, we have four nominations for vice chair. Mr. Larry, Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Mike Kinnear. Supervisor Monica Barrier. Sorry, there's five. Supervisor Luke Wilsey. And Supervisor Gary Steen.
Okay, let's take this one at a time. Supervisor Steen, do you accept the nomination? Supervisor Steen accepts the nomination. Supervisor Mike Kinnear, do you accept the nomination?
No, thank you.
Supervisor Kinnear declines the nomination. Supervisor Barrier.
I'm honored, but no.
Supervisor Barrier declines the nomination. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
No, thank you.
Supervisor Larry Bjork declines the nomination. Supervisor Wilsey.
I do accept.
Supervisor Wilsey accepts the nominations. Nominations have been received and accepted for Supervisor Gary Steen and Supervisor Luke Wilsey. Supervisors Headland and Supervisors Calabrese will now pass around a ballot in which each supervisor will fill out a single name to vote for vice chair. Supervisor Vander Mullen, if you would like to email me your vote, that will make sure it's tallied. Thank you, Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Vander Mullen, your vote has been received. Thank you. Do you have any blank ones? Do you have any blank ones left?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is Supervisor Vander Mullen's vote. Thank you.
Hey, the results are Luke Wilsey, 13 votes. Gary Steen, 15 votes.
Congratulations Supervisor Steen.
Okay, now that the tense part of the evening is over, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Story seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Motion, panelists, minutes are approved. Public comment. This is the point in the evening where anyone can come up and speak for up to three minutes on whatever topic really takes their fancy, basically. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Carol Breslin, and I'm a resident of Dunn County. First, thank you for allowing me to speak. And congratulations to all new and returning supervisors. I've spoken to this board in the past regarding open record requests, and I'm here to talk to you again this evening about them. The April election was two weeks ago today. And since that election, I have sent seven open record requests to the county clerk for information about the District 20 election. At the time I am preparing this speech, 1:05 a.m. this morning, six of the seven remain unanswered. And I'm sure you'll agree that election-related open record requests are time-sensitive. While I understand that the county clerk's office is currently understaffed, I'm going to bring to your attention something that I believe deserves immediate attention. On April 2nd, at 10:44 p.m., I contacted the county clerk at his office regarding the District 20 election. The winner of that seat was an unregistered write-in candidate. If that unregistered write-in candidate's win was organic, I'm fine with that. Unfortunately, I do not believe that to be the case. When the registered write-in candidate filed her paperwork on Friday, March 29th, the county clerk highlighted the section that contained the box for political affiliation. He did not explain to her that it was nonpartisan race, so not to fill that out. I've heard that on Saturday, March 30th, the county clerk complained about having had a write-in candidate register at the last minute and that he then had to stay up till midnight finding a Democrat to run. In my opinion, if he can stay up till midnight swaying an election, he can work till midnight fulfilling my open record requests. There's also an interesting Facebook post from the winning candidate dated Saturday, March 30th, included in your packets. If this seat was lost fair and square, like I said, I'm good. After the last three and a half years, I'm used to losing. If, however, the top election official in Dunn County placed his thumb on the scale of this election, this is a problem, and I will fight it. It also begs the question that if there's one race in question, are there others? I'm interested in the truth, nothing more, nothing less. I believe that some of the truth has been dropped in my lap through divine providence. And though that may sound crazy to some of you, there is only one opinion of me that I'm interested in. I made copies of all open records requests and the responses that I have received thus far. I recommend that because this governing body appointed the county clerk in May of 2021, and he was not elected to this position, you, as the Board of Supervisors, take this complaint very seriously and encourage the county clerk to produce all requested items immediately. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Don't I especially sound like I swallowed a frog? Okay. I closed appointments. Report of County Manager, Chris.
All right, good evening, and welcome to your first county board meeting for new members. So I'm going to just give you a. Yep.
Sorry.
Sorry. There are two appointments that are listed on your sheet that need board confirmation. Sorry, we have to back up. There's a West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Sorry Supervisor McCullough, Chairman McCullough. There's a West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission appointments that need to happen tonight, as well as a Health and Human Services Board appointments that need to happen. Those require board confirmation. So we would need a motion and a second to approve both of those boards and commissions.
Supervisor Larry Bjork, is that a motion? It'll have to wait till we have a motion and a second.
Got it, thank you.
Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Kneer seconds. All right Supervisor Larry Bjork. Microphone please.
Is that prior to your reelection, how can you make board chair appointments that are so serious that it affects the executive committee of this county?
Well, they weren't official until I was re-elected board chair, as I noted at the beginning.
Well, I got it sitting here that you have announced this, that's all. So what you announced really didn't mean anything until you were elected?
I believe I said that at the beginning of the meeting, I said these had gotten out prematurely.
I missed that, sorry.
Yeah, no, they were, I said that these were supposed to come out later. The clerk got a little bit ahead of the game and they were contingent on my being re-elected.
Well, I'm happy that it worked out for you.
Thank you Supervisor Larry Bjork. Any other speaking to the appointments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Point let's pass. County Manager, please continue.
Sorry Chris.
All right, so I'm going to give you a bunch of odds and ends pieces of information this evening. I just wanted to start by saying that I've been in this role for about twenty months, I think. It goes by really, really quickly. But I've been in the county for many, many years. And I am here to serve at the pleasure of the board. So I explained this to the new members at our orientation the other evening, but I think it warrants kind of repeating that there are three forms of kind of oversight to county boards. One is a county executive, which is an elected position. There are about thirteen of those in the state of Wisconsin. The second is county administrator, who is appointed by the board but acts as the chief administrative officer for the county. And the difference between that and the role that I have as an administrative coordinator is that a county administrator has appointment powers. So they appoint the boards and committees and commissions. And I obviously don't have that, that is vested in our county board chairs. So I've said earlier last week, when you've seen one county, you've seen one county. So as you go out to speak with some of your colleagues in other counties and they do things differently, some of that is dictated by the form of oversight that they have based on the type of structure that they have chosen at some point in time for their county. And because I think that there's good data to show that we only remember about twenty percent of what we hear, I do intend to kind of give you pieces of information and you'll probably hear them again. It's not because I forgot that I told you, it's because I think some things aren't being said on more than one occasion. So I'd like to start by speaking, just giving you a brief introduction. Now every every, not every department head is here. But you will see, over here we call the peanut gallery. But over here, we have, and in the back, we have a number of our department heads. And so if you also would rise, this is so dangerous when you're old to do this because I'm going to look at one of them and pretend I've never seen them before in my life because I won't remember their name. But I'm going to start in the back. Biata, Biata Hug is our Chief Financial Officer. You'll hear a lot from her in the days and weeks to come as we move into budget. Carmen Meyer is our Nursing Home Administrator at the Neighbors of Dunn County. Tracy Fisher's sneaking in. She is the ADRC Manager for the Department of Human Services. Heather Kuhn is our Register of Deeds. Paula Winter is the Department of Human Services Director. Melissa Gillenbach is the 911 Emergency Communication and Emergency Management Director. Jenna Nutter is our HR Director. Dan Dunbar is our Assistant County Administrator, I'm going to call the wrong one, Assistant County Manager and Chief Financial, Chief, I don't know who he is, CIO. Chief Information Officer, yes. And then in the back, we have Dustin Bender, our Highway Commissioner. Greg Quinn, our Veteran Service Officer. And did I miss anybody else who's? Who? Oh, Louisa, where is Louisa? Oh, Louisa. Louisa Jerosimo, who's an educator with UW Extension. So you will see them, they don't come to every meeting, but they, not everyone comes to every meeting, but you will see them on a regular basis because they believe that it's important for you to know and establish and have a developer relationship with them as well. So I want you to know that my doors always open, Biata's door is open, Dan's. We want you to have good information to make good decisions. Like I said, I've been in the county for a long time. I was a department head for a long time and I attended countless county board meetings and committee meetings. And I always thought that you had too little information to make decisions on. So you're probably going to get more information than less from me. Some of these meetings do go a little bit long. We are finding a rhythm to them and they're getting better. So I'm trying not to bore you to tears with long meetings, but I do think there's a lot of information as you make really big decisions about people's lives and they're important decisions. So our doors are open, call, send an email, ask a question, you know, stop in for a chat, invite me for a cup of coffee. I'll invite you for a cup of coffee, I'll even pay. Whatever you want, whatever you need, I want you to have the information that you need on any matter in order to make a good decision. So with that being said, you do have a little note and I'm sure that you'll get reminded of it at the end of the meeting as well. But next weekend, a week from this Saturday, we will conduct our capital improvement workshop. There'll be no action taken at that meeting, but it will give you some background information as you start to move into the world of making decisions around budgets. In this particular case, on our capital improvement budgets. And if you read the little card that was crafted for your behalf, you're going to stand up singing for the rest of the evening in your head around, "We built this county on rock and whatever roads." So another little piece of information, tomorrow morning, some of our new committee appointments hit the ground running at 8:30 in the morning for the Planning Resources and Development Committee, who will be conducting an open hearing, a public hearing on accessory dwelling units, potential ordinance change. So if you're interested in that, it would be a good meeting to attend or listen to after the fact. It will be recorded and will be available on the county's YouTube page within a day or two. And I think, oh, one last thing. I wanted to say that sometimes there's a bit of like shoot the messenger in the role that we play as leadership for the county. I want to kind of, we're going to talk about this again next week at capital improvements, but it came up really to talk about roles. So the department head's role is really to advocate for what their departments need, whether that's staff, resources, money, funding, whatever that looks like. It's their job, they're hired to do that. And to keep their department operating smoothly. Biata, Dan and I, Jenna, we are all part of the leadership team that acts as a liaison to kind of translate that information to you. And you as board members have the role of deciding what happens and if it needs a funding, how it's funded. So as we move into budget, particularly capital improvements and then our operating budget as we move through the summer, I'm always saying, don't blame the department heads for asking, that's their role. But you get to decide, you get to ask us to make it clear to you what you're deciding on and you get to decide what you decide to fund and what services that you decide to provide. So a couple of the little pieces of information. Dan, can you bring up the investments? Oh, I kind of went out of my order, sorry for that. So, oh, this will work. So you have in your packets, but I wanted you to see it. I won't provide it to you every month, if you want to see it every month, I'm glad to send it to you. But I think it's really interesting information, it's provided by one of our investment advisors. They send it every month and it shows you the county's sales tax income or revenue on an annual basis. And you can see that it gives you information going back to 2021. You also see that, so this is that half of percent. So when you charge five and a half percent interest in Dunn County, the half of percent comes back to the county and this is what that adds up to. So that the end of 2023, it was $4,787, it's four hundred, $4,587.806. And this year, we are trending $379,000 as of March over where we were at last year. So just a kind of information for your back pocket because it is a source of revenue that we use as we move into budgeting. And you can kind of see how that's, how that's grown. A lot of that grew after the implementation of the ability for states to charge for internet purchases. If your business is selling it out of Wisconsin, then we collect that sales tax. And so if it's a Dunn County place, then we collect that half a percent as well. Any questions about that? All right, second piece. Is just a, we'll spend more time in investments. I wanted you to know by ordinance, we have an investment committee comprised of the treasurer, who interim treasurer is Angela Wagner, you'll meet our new treasurer here shortly. Myself is the county manager and the Chief Financial Officer. Biata are our investment committee. We do have a number of persons or entities that assist us in that. So I just wanted to real quick walk through this. Again, I won't provide it to you every month, but as you kind of question, where's our money or how much money do we have? And where is it? So a fair amount of our money lives in that top called LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool. It's a collective of government investors, counties, municipalities, who, and it holds our money, we can access it within a day. And they invest it on our behalf collectively. And the interest rates kind of follow the current trending of the day. So it goes up right now, you can see that for the month of January. And I gave you January's just because it was one I could grab really quickly. You can see that it was, we made 5.39% interest on our LGIP account in January. But if that interest rate dropped down to four percent, we would make four percent. For a really long time, we made like half a percent or a quarter of a percent of interest. And then, so then those breakouts below that of general, workers comp, ARPA, opioid and LATCF, that should be the way, LATCF. Those are all just individual funds within that $14 million. And that number will go up and down when you look at this page on any given day because we move money in and out to make payroll, pay bills, et cetera. The Bremer General Fund Account is basically our checking account. And again, that number will vary dramatically depending on if it's right before a payroll or it's right after a payroll, right before we pay out, you know, a large expense or a tax payment. Like all of those things matter, but that's basically our checking account. In the long-term investments, PMF, PFM is one of our investment advisors. They have a long-term, long-invested fund with them. It's about $6.4 million right now. That's money that we can get at quickly, but we tend to want to leave there because it's invested in a ladder of times when it comes due and can be reinvested. And that's sort of our longer-term investment. And then the last one on the bottom is PMA Financial, which is another investment firm. And they have, we've just started to do some work with them in the last roughly year. And they have some odds and ends of funds that we've moved with them as well. Again, we can get at them quickly, but we're just kind of testing the water with them to see kind of how the performance between the two investment programs. So on this particular day of, at the end of January in 2024, we had about $28 million in our accounts. Any questions about that? Okay, then I'm going to circle back really quickly and talk about the the thing that you will see on a regular monthly basis are any things, purchase orders, any items that we pay that are more than $40,000 kind of in one chunk. So you'll see in that list this month, there are a number of interest payments on debt, principal and interest payments on debt. Those tend to come due twice a year, we pay half in one part, half in the second part. There was a bulldozer, a quad axle payment, a track loader, two Ford Explorers and the weed control herbicides that the highway department sprays on the side of the road. So you'll see those just because it's a requirement in our ordinance that we share those larger purchases with you. If you have any questions about those, I'd be glad to answer. Biata's been doing a nice job of putting a little explanation with them. So they're fairly self-explanatory, but sometimes they're kind of one-off where you're like, what is that? I think with that being said, I scrolled all these little notes to myself. I think that's all that I have to shift.
Thank you, Chris. That brings us to reports of departments, starting with Register of Deeds. Heather, come on up.
Good evening and welcome new supervisors. Again, I'm Heather Kuhn, the Register of Deeds. The 2023 Register of Deeds Annual Report was included in your county board packet and I'll just briefly touch on a few of the highlights. Our department reports to the Planning Resource and Development Standing Committee. If you aren't familiar with our office, we maintain the county's real estate records and vital records and our duties are prescribed by Wisconsin statute. Last year, we recorded 4,998 real estate-related documents, which was the lowest number of documents that we recorded in the last 10 years. Of those documents, there were 56 different document types, which included deeds, mortgages, satisfactions of mortgages, easements, certified survey maps and managed force law orders. The number of recordings or documents impacts revenue, which is ultimately driven by the housing market. We typically issue around 5,000 certified copies of birth, death, marriage and divorce certificates annually. We spend a lot of time assisting the public with research for genealogy, tax bill-related questions, GIS mapping questions, estate planning and proof of ownership. As far as projects, last year, the pre-1907 vital records and military discharges were scanned last fall and we are still waiting on the final import of those digital images. There has been quite a bit of legislation to monitor and one of the bills that recently passed allows for a landowner to record a discharge or a release of a discriminatory restrictive covenant if one exists in their chain of title. One of the PR and D committee members asked to hear more on this, so I thought I'd share a little bit of information. The discriminatory covenants are illegal and unenforceable, but may appear on the historical documents located in our office. The Supreme Court ruled the covenants unenforceable in 1948 and the Fair Housing Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination by direct providers of housing whose discriminatory practices make housing unavailable to persons because of race or color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status or disability. In order to locate these restrictive discriminatory covenants, you would need to hire a title search to be done or you could come into our office and we can show you how to research your property. I don't have a comprehensive list of these covenants, nor do I claim to know where they are located in the hundreds of thousands of documents in our office. But, and I also don't have the authority to redact or alter any document once it's placed of record. But we did have an intern last year that started paging through our deed books from the 1930s and she found some of these covenants on property in the Elk Creek area. Another growing trend that you may hear about in the news is property fraud. If you have any concerns, we offer Property Fraud Alert, which is a free service and it provides a notification via text, email or phone call if a document is recorded with your name. This is not fraud prevention, but simply a notification service of any recordings indexed with your name. So you can stop in our office, call our office and we can sign you up. You can sign up yourself if you go to the Dunn County website on the Register of Deeds page. Thank you for your continued support and that concludes my report.
Any questions for Heather? Any questions for Heather? Looks like you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Veterans, uh, Greg, come on up.
Good evening, county board chair, county board supervisors, county manager. My, uh, Veterans Office, uh, annual report. Um, first, first off, just to, um, give a, an overall, uh, description of what probably the most important thing is, is, uh, with the work that, that we do is, uh, customer service. Health and Human Services Board is who we report to. And, and that's what we emphasize each month, just to ensure that that is, that number one is kind of the guiding, guiding principle. Um, our responsibility is to serve veterans, dependents, and, and also any, anybody that has any questions or any caring or anybody from the public, they should all expect the, the same, same type of service from our office. Uh, my report, I'm going to break it down into three, three different areas. Uh, federal benefits, state benefits, and then, then local, uh, items that, that we, uh, assist with. So one of the, the, probably the most important, um, legislation pieces happened in 2022, uh, acronym PACT Act. Basically, the, uh, the overall description of that is toxic exposure. Throughout many, many years and forever, um, there's a cost versus benefit to, uh, the services that, that, uh, our veterans do to keep, uh, keep people safe. And so there's been more and more recognition about all of the toxic exposure. And, and, uh, what that has is it really kind of increased, uh, a large number of requests for assistance and honestly, some really life-changing outcomes for surviving spouses, um, with, uh, with this new act. I list in my report and just a, a small amount of some of the, the toxins. And, and those of you watch any, any television at night, you, you've seen for probably a year and a half, a lot of stuff about Camp Lejeune and lawyers trying to solicit, um, some, uh, uh, people to sign up to do lawsuit against federal government. They open that, open that up, which isn't, isn't too often to, uh, um, do that to the public. Uh, the other, the other, um, in the federal side is Veterans Health Administration. Uh, reporting here, we have, uh, so Veterans Health Administration and the Veterans Benefits Administration and the cemetery, the three, uh, three legs to the federal system. The Veterans Health Administration, in our local, local area, most of our veterans are served by an outpatient clinic in Chippewa Falls. Uh, the main hospital or the hub is out of the, uh, Minneapolis VA Medical Center. So in this territory, uh, some legislation about four years ago, expanded the ability for local and community care to be provided. So in the event that somebody in, uh, honestly, it applies to every Dunn County veteran. A year more than one hour drive time, not, not miles drive time, which applies to every veteran. You no longer have to drive or be forced to go to Minneapolis VA Medical Center for any type of specialty care. Hearing aids, get a new knee, um, any type of orthopedic surgery. There, they, um, have local providers. Mayo is a provider, Marshfield, um, Purbea, Sacred Heart. There, there's going to be some new challenges that I think we're aware of that's going to impact the, uh, what I anticipate impacting the, the availability or the capacity to provide some of the community care, which will just delay some of the, um, some of those services. But in the end, it really benefits our, our local veterans to receive those, um, local authorization. And, and it brings more, more money in rather than, um, having individuals drive up to, uh, Minneapolis. The other part is on a state level, um, due to some, um, ARPA funds, we were able to last year receive, uh, an influx of, of an additional, um, uh, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars i- in the form of a supplemental County Veteran Service Officer Grant that, that, um, expanded upon our existing eleven, eleven thousand. It allowed us to add some hours. Thanks to the support of the, uh, county board and the budget process, we're able to now continue, um, with those additional hours in our office to provide, uh, services to veterans and dependents, to the public locally. Um, I, I think a lot of you are familiar with our medical equipment loan, loan program. Um, the justification for us to continue to, to use that, that medical, or offer that medical equipment loan clause, we, we loan it out to anybody in, in Dunn County. Uh, we won't, we, we do not restrict based upon, uh, veteran status. Local, uh, hospitals, providers are, are fully aware of that. So, uh, we, we get over, it, it's been pretty, pretty, uh, static at over six hundred some requests for medical equipment. But that brings people to us just with, that's our marketing, a piece of our marketing. So it brings them in. We get to ask them if they, they're a veteran as well as if they have any family members. And that kind of leads down the road of additional benefits. Um, budget-wise, part of, part of responsibility is be good stewards of the, of the county's money and what you entrust us with. Um, we have three cost centers. You can look at them, small, small budget, big impact. That's my opinion. Um, and you can see that we definitely, we come in, come in under budget, uh, trying to be as efficient as, as we can. A couple, couple of big, big items, federal benefits. So part of our role is, uh, submitting federal claims for people that have been injured, people that are lower income, or other, um, healthcare-related, uh, claims to the Veterans Health Administration. You do a comparison from 2022 to 2023, you can see, see a large increase in the compensation pension area. Um, seventeen million dollars, one hundred, one hundred and forty thousand. Um, why that's important is that's, that's real money. That's money that gets deposited into individuals' checking accounts, money that gets spent in the, in the county, purchasing things, sales tax, all, all of those, uh, things are, uh, a, a positive for the county. Um, the other part, the medical care and unique, unique patients. Um, there's, we've, we've seen a slight decrease in the number of veterans, uh, uh, veteran population in the county. Seen that, uh, uh, as a whole in the state of Wisconsin and nationwide. And that's just a, that's a generational thing based upon what was going on during, uh, World War II, Korea, Vietnam. So we have, e- even though there's a lot more media attention around a lot of the conflicts that, that we're fighting in, there's less veterans being created. Um, so we're going to see that trend going down. However, the benefits that, that are available have increased. The other, uh, item that we track is retroactive payments. So, um, in the event that we're doing a, an appeal to fight, fight for somebody's benefits that they've earned, it can take one year, it can take five years, six years. We've been tracking to show the impact of those retroactive funds. This last year was a little over a million, million dollars that came in. And again, when I, I just kind of emphasize, it's real money that comes in the form of large, large checks that are definite difference makers for individuals, uh, and, and families, that they've been waiting for these benefits for a long time. And, um, we'll continue to track that. I'm not certain what the baseline, baseline is, but I anticipate it's going to be anywhere from eight hundred thousand to a little over a million, million each year that through those efforts, we're going to continue to be able to bring that, uh, those funds in. Um, I highlighted a, a benefit, just one probably most complicated benefit that we have to, uh, pursue. It's, it's an income-based, means-tested benefit. Uh, and, and the whole intent behind it is to take care of our wartime veterans and, and their surviving spouses. This, uh, the description of this benefit, uh, just identifies that there's an income cap, um, right, right around sixteen thousand dollars for a veteran with no dependents. If your social security is, is, uh, uh, annual fifteen thousand, you're only going to receive like a hundred dollars a month just to plus you up. So you don't, you're technically not in poverty, even though it is poverty money. Very difficult still to live off of that, but that is a baseline. You have to be disabled, um, permanently disabled under the age of sixty-five or sixty-five or older. And you can, uh, qualify for that benefit. The last item, there's a list of impact statements. So each, each month, try to report, uh, something significant, an impact that we've made on, our office has made on, on a family or an individual. Um, draw your attention to number five, and then, um, county manager, uh, her favorite was number 11. Um, both, really both of those, what, what I would want you to focus on is just the longevity and that connection with, with those, those individuals. Both individuals suffered from, uh, from some self-medication, some, some challenges when it comes to, uh, some, some criminal, criminal behavior. One, one individual, that's, that's probably my, my favorite, the individual, just to stay sober after going through treatment, pop in, pop in the office just to eat, eat, uh, at, at our desk over lunch. And then come to find out he had to do community service. So I'm like, hey, you're going to answer the phone. And so then we counted that, that, uh, for community service to help him along the way. And he progressed through those, uh, for quite a few years. Today remains sober. Him and his wife have bought, uh, and three kids have bought a, bought a home. So you go from, uh, th- those challenges, you just offer up that spot. And, and I, and I know that some of my, my cohorts, the same thing, you just offer up that, that, uh, little bit of support and encouragement and an opportunity, and people take that, and, and good things come. And then in the end, less money the county has to spend. That'll conclude my brief. Pending any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you for the, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the report. Um, you said the number of veterans has decreased in Dunn County. Um, do you get those numbers just from the census every 10 years? Or how do you determine each year the number of veterans?
Thank, thank you for that question. The Veteran, Veterans Administration publishes an annual report. Acronyms GDX, geographical, I, I don't know the other, other two letters in that acronym. And that's where I draw, draw the numbers from. Um, so in, uh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two, the veteran population in Dunn County, based upon their, their report, uh, two thousand six hundred and seven, uh, veterans. That report is based upon 2021 data, because it takes a, a year to making sure, make sure they can reconcile it. This year, the veteran population is two thousand five hundred and twenty based upon that report. Um, so we're always like a year, year behind on it, but it's, it's Veterans Administration, um, data based upon the, the address of the veteran. They can break, break that right down.
Thank you. And do you, do you reach out to them once you get those numbers and those names, or do they have to come to you?
We, we don't, we don't get the names.
Okay.
Um, we, so that's, that's where that outreach is. There's, there's a, a number of mechanisms that guide, uh, veterans when, once they're leaving service to offices such as our, ourselves. So, uh, there's, um, three, three levels. I actually just told you, three, three levels. It's federal level to market the services that are out there to support. There's state-level responsibility, and then there's our, our local level, which I'm going to lead into local level, uh, April 27th. Um, we have a veteran outreach event at the Menominee Alliance Church to expand upon the service. We have over a hundred and, probably a hundred and ten, uh, veterans registered right now, twenty-five, twenty-six resource vendors, uh, that are going to be there. And, uh, Secretary of the Wisconsin Department of Veterans Affairs is going to be there. So that's our, our local efforts.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Steen, I'm. Uh, yes, Greg, I, I wonder if you would like to touch on the fact that, uh, a, a lot of our veterans, uh, are hesitant to, uh, utilize the services that are there. And also stress or, or mention that the parameters for qualifications for benefits are increasing or being stretched out at all times. So, you know, I, I, I would encourage anybody that has a father, grandfather, brother, whatever, uh, to look into your benefits, because maybe you weren't, maybe you weren't eligible 10 years ago, 15 years ago. The parameters are changing, and Greg does a great job of helping those people through that maze of stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Extension. Louisa?
Good evening, everybody. So glad to see everybody here today. Uh, my name is Louisa Gerisimo. I have a frog in my throat. I must have gotten that from you. I'm an educator with the University of Wisconsin-Madison Division of Extension. Um, I'm here in the place of Kristen Bruder, our area extension director. She asked me to step up today, um, this evening and give a little bit of information about our programming. She sends her regrets that she is unable to join you this evening. Uh, Kristen serves the Dunn County Extension as well as Eau Claire and Chippewa County Extension Offices. The area extension director's role is a lot like that of a department head in the county. The position is fully funded by UW Madison, so Kristen is paid by Madison to do her job and is responsible for partnership management, staff development, fiscal management, and program coordination. You will receive an email from Kristen in the coming weeks welcoming new board members and congratulating our re-elected supervisors. So where is Kristen tonight? Kristen is in Madison, celebrating one of our award-winning extension educators, Jerry Clark. Jerry is the crops and soils educator and was recently awarded a prestigious UW Madison Charles Van Heiss Award and is being recognized at a ceremony tonight. A bit of background on the award, as president of the university from 1903 to 1918, Charles Van Heiss developed the doctrine known today as the Wisconsin Idea. This outlines the effort to extend the borders of the university to touch the lives of people throughout Wisconsin and around the world. The Wisconsin Idea is at work right here in Dunn County. And in fact, my job is very much about connecting the resources of the university to our Dunn County families. I've worked at Extension since 2018. My current role is Human Development and Relationships Educator for Dunn County, very long title. Um, I also have a shorter title, which is the Family Educator. Um, I bring evidence-based programming to my home county, which is Dunn, where I grew up, from the university. I teach a variety of parenting courses as well as serving on regional and county teams and alliances that are working to help our families right here. Please look at the 2023 Annual Report from Extension. It's very colorful. We used a lot more pictures and images and shorter things and not so many words this year. So we want you to take a look at that. Um, if you take a look, you'll see more about my programs and more about the programs and activities of my amazing colleagues in the UW Extension here in Dunn County. Since we just have a few minutes to do our report, I wanted to highlight an ongoing program from 2023 that didn't get covered in the report because we were being brief. Um, it is called Parents Forever, and this is often court-ordered by our family court for parents who are divorcing or separating, but they're sharing children. Um, parents who are splitting up, as you probably are aware, are pretty common. I think almost all of us know somebody who has been divorced or who has split up and who has children. Um, we offer this three-to-four-hour course once a month. Every month I do, every other month, I do a Saturday morning in-person class here, uh, in this building. We had seven here on Saturday morning of this past weekend. And then we also offer this important class online every other month, and I do that with the help of a co-facilitator, my colleague Missy in, um, Extension Barron County. We get people from all over the state for this class and often have classes of twenty to forty parents attending online. Offering this course online has helped parents without transportation or childcare resources to take this very important class. The Parents Forever Program is over twenty-five years old and came out of the Minnesota Supreme Court, our very nice neighbors to the west. They asked their Extension Division to develop something to help families do a better job co-parenting. Kids were really getting hurt, parents were frustrated, and the courts were being absolutely overwhelmed by couples coming back again and again and again to try and get custody or change their family plan or change an agreement. And what they realized is that parents lacked basic education about how to parent and how to be a decent co-parent with the other parent. So this is an intense, multi-hour class made up of mostly people who don't want to be there. So when I show up on Saturday morning, I have a bunch of people who are leaning back in their chairs with their arms crossed and their heads tucked down. Um, I take that as a personal challenge. I kind of like to see a bunch of grumpy people staring at me at eight o'clock in the morning on a Saturday. Because I'm like, I'm going to have you eating out of my hands by the end of this class. And sure enough, um, we do give out surveys and we ask people to say, you know, how they're feeling about things now. And one of the common comments we get is, ah, why didn't I have this six months ago? Or six years ago, honestly. So, um, it's kind of fun. It is a little intense. There's a lot of feelings that come up. And we hope that the couples who are taking these classes end up becoming better parents as a result of the class, and we have better, um, outcomes for the children who are really impacted by divorce. Don't know if you guys know this, but it is not divorce itself, which is bad for children. It is the fighting. So many couples who get divorced really should get divorced. We don't want them to be married and fighting all the time. It's very, very difficult, tends to really tear apart families. So the divorce itself is less of a problem than the constant arguing or the tearing down of the other family member. If you know your children and grandchildren, you know that they love probably both their parents. And the worst thing you can do to a young person is tell them how much you hate somebody that they love, right? So what we do is very delicate and a difficult thing, and it's something that I really enjoy teaching. Um, we get an amazing handbook out to people that they use afterwards and during the class. And that handbook, plus the related materials, plus the class itself, all four hours, twenty bucks. Um, we offer financial assistance for people who might have difficulty coming up with that twenty bucks. And one of the concepts we teach in Parents Forever is a tool that I think we could all use as parents, friends, educators, grandparents, and it's called emotion coaching. I don't have time tonight to teach it to you. However, it doesn't take very long to learn. And this technique is as simple as hearing what a child has to say and helping label that emotion. You sound really sad, you sound really sad, or wow, are you angry? You're helping the child put a name to what they're feeling. child put a name to what they're feeling. And we ask it as a question because sometimes children will surprise us and they'll say, no, I'm just really sad when you think they're angry. Once it's, you've labeled it, you empathize with them, you say, oh, you know, I feel that way too sometimes, or I can see why you feel that way, or hey, it's really normal to have these feelings. And then we help them problem solve. We put it on the kid and we say, what do you think would help in this situation? Because little ones often have really unique and fun solutions to things that we as big people would make way too complicated, way too difficult, or completely off base because children think differently than we do. What I know is that preschool teachers and early childhood educators would absolutely love it if we could help our kids be better prepared to understand and deal with their own emotions when they get to school. So that brings me to my conclusion and a small plea for those of you who will be influencing our future here in Dunn County. Sometimes people say, what would you do if you had a magic wand? Man, I love that question. I really do wish I had a magic wand. If I had a magic wand in my position professionally, something that I could do that I think would make things better for all of us in this room would be to do more prevention work in our county, and that's to go with the younger kids, to work with people who are pregnant, families that are expecting, people with little children. If we could fully fund the efforts that we have in this county to reach parents where they are, where they are new to parenting, I think we could avoid a lot of pain and much more expensive programmings or treatments, things that have to come later to try and mitigate the trauma or the difficulty that that family has had. I really wish that we could fully fund our Birth to Three Program, our Public Health Department, our Human Services, and our WIC, which is Women, Infant, and Children. I wish we could share more with our young families so we didn't have to share more with them later when we have people in treatment court, when we have people in jail, when we have schools that are really trying hard to help all of our children do well in school. So that's what I would like to say. I'd like to also say that our Extension Office is a joy to work at. We have really terrific colleagues. We all work with evidence-based programming and we do our absolute best every day for the residents of Dunn County, and we do that with your support. And I want to thank you tonight for the service that you provide to our people here in Dunn County.
Thank you, Louisa. Any questions? You're off the hook. All right. Item 12, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances to the county board from the Executive Committee. A resolution amending capital improvements and ARPA funding. I will need a motion and a second. Supervisor Calabrese moves. Supervisor Quentin seconds. Chris, do you want to give the basic rundown for this?
So we have been, we received money that has been budgeted into our capital improvement planning over the last few years. At the time that the plans were approved, there were estimates of the cost of what those projects would come to. Some of them came in under budget. Some of those projects weren't able to be completed for a vast variety of reasons. Some didn't, some were determined to not be needed or not at this time. One example would be there was $500,000 allocated to put in a road between here and the Judicial Center. We actually repurposed that money, redid, upgraded a service road that runs behind the buildings and comes out on the north side of the Judicial Center. It's a gravel road, but staff do use it. And we partnered with the city of Menominee to, as we're putting in the pedestrian trail, recreation trail. We originally allocated $500,000. It will end up being whatever I said that it was going to be, $150,000 or $170,000 or something, much less. And so, so that being said, we have to encumber our ARPA funding by the end of this year, which means that we have to have a firm commitment for it. We can't just, it's like we have to have a contract or we have to purchase something or waiting for its delivery, or something that ties us to actually expending it. Otherwise, we could carry it over and use it for capital improvements in 2025. That's not an option. So we are looking at reallocating that money out to two projects that are a need. One of them is a system to do cameraing, security, and badge swipes entry to all of our county buildings except for some of the remote highway shops. The highway shop, the transit building, the Judicial Center, the Government Center, and the neighbors, the three households of the neighbors, or three buildings of the neighbors of Dunn County. And so right now, we have some coded entries to a number of the buildings. The problem is it's really difficult with staff coming and going to keep up to date on making, keeping those codes changed. When there's keys, we don't have a great, the key system that's been in place has been in place for many, many years, and we don't have a great way of tracking those keys. So if a key is lost, it means that we have a lot of vulnerabilities that we'd like to shore up. So we would, are asking to reallocate money that was previously allocated for ARPA funding to different projects, one being that cameraing and key entry system, swipe key badge entry system, which would be about, looks to be, it'll be about an $800,000 project. And the other would be to use the remainder of the money to purchase our new financial system for the new county board members. We have a financial system that we purchased in 2016 called SAP. We had a Dismo implementation of that product and have struggled with it ever since. And SAP is going to undergo a platform change that will require us to go through essentially steps that are similar to our first implementation project. So it was an ideal time for us to take a look at a new system. We've been in the planning for about a year and a half and are looking at potentially purchasing a system yet this year and then the licensing for a system and doing the implementation mid next year. So that is the request is to take money that was previously allocated to some projects and reallocate it to the security system and the financial system.
Thank you, Chris. Any speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Mr. Chairman, good. Chris, explain, or maybe everybody knows the source of ARPA money and what ARPA means and how much money Dunn County has received and spent. Just a little update on ARPA.
Sure. ARPA was the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. It was federal money. It was allocated after the beginning of COVID. It came to us into, what do they call those, tranches? I've never heard the word tranche before, but I've heard it more since federal funding than ever before in my life. Two tranches. Our total received was about $8.8 million. As you may have noted in their investment account information, we have had that money sitting and gaining interest. So we have some money over that amount. I can't tell you exactly off the top of my head how much, but a bulk of that, about half of that or better, went to some highway projects. And then some of it was allocated in a number of ways over 2023 and 2024 towards various projects that were part of our capital improvement plan. And so right, and we used about a million and a half dollars of that this year to, to, you know, close the gap and finalize our operational and project budget for this year. We used it to put it, fund our capital improvements in 2024.
Supervisor Patrick Breslin.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Chris, can you please explain, when ARPA first came out and was allocated to the counties, wasn't the sole purpose of that money for broadband internet or locations outside basically rural locations?
So there were a number, about a handful of things that it could be used for. Some of them, there were directly applicable, like municipalities, like sewer and water systems were one of them that resonates for me as true. But broadband was certainly one of them, and some of our money was used towards match money to grants for broadband. As you, I think in that you could see we, we allocated $240,000, one in $100,000 chunk and the other in $140,000 chunk to some of the local internet service providers who were applying for grants to expand rural coverage. And we did, some of those grants were actually granted. So some of that money is encumbered in that we've made a commitment, we were written commitment with those entities. They haven't completed the construction yet, but they have until the end of 2026 to do that. But broadband was certainly something that you could use that money for, but there were another, a handful of other purposes that you could use it for as well.
Thank you. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That ARPA funds that were sitting in the bank were they already programmed for a different project or they just waiting for a project to come up?
So you, so you allocated some of them in 2023? I get confused about yours, 2023 towards some highway projects, about four-ish, I'm looking at Dustin. I don't know. Three to four and a half million dollars, because I'm winging it off the top of my head. But we had some of, so the first, about half of it was allocated towards highway projects in 2023. And, or sorry, I think that was allocated in 2022.
Oh, yeah.
And then, yeah. And then in 2023, we're at the bulk of some of these other projects, like some of the chiller projects at the replacement of the chillers and the whatever things, things, thingy things that happen in buildings. I don't know, at the Judicial Center. But a lot of those projects that you see in that list were projects that were approved then for 2023. And then a small amount, not small amount because it was a million and a half dollars, but remainder of that were allocated into 2024 for some other additional capital improvement projects.
What I really wanted to know was what projects were like eliminated by the money going someplace else?
It shows on that list. So, so, so one of them I mentioned to you was the, we had allocated $500,000 towards the road and the, and a path between here and the Judicial Center. Highway, a lot of people end up walking on the highway or along the highway, and it's been a dangerous spot for a long time. So, but we had come up, came up with an alternate plan that only used a portion of that money. So that's why it's coming back to you now to say some of that wasn't used. The other piece that was pretty significant expenses were those chillers and, I don't know, heat exchangers, I don't know, something at the Judicial Center, which as the county looks at whether or not there's an expansion into some sort of like solar or building a geothermal field there, there's a lot more grant money right now to do those things. It's that why expend that money, which was hundreds of thousands of dollars, to upgrade those things until we know exactly what we're upgrading to and probably will have another funding source for. So, and then some of them simple like the, the small amount, $80,000 was allocated to the Child Support Office to do some scanning of back files and eliminate paper, and they spent less than half of that.
Supervisor Steen.
So if I remember right, I think some of those guidelines that expend the money were extended. They started out with one date and then they extended it. And then secondarily, I'm understanding that this money has to be encumbered in this year.
It has to be encumbered by the end of this year. I think what happened was when they, when they allocated the money, they listed some things. As time went on, they added more things to that list. Essentially, they said after some period of time that if you received under $10 million, you had much broader ability to spend it on a kind of a wide variety of things versus some of the larger counties and municipalities who really literally received hundreds of millions of dollars. So, so it evolved and changed. I think early on, there was a lot of speculation about the best way to use it, but the, the rules were kind of continually evolving. I think we're been pretty solid on our plan for, for use of it now, but it was a moving target.
Supervisor Lauper.
Yeah, Chris, was there any prevention of using that money for, say, paying down our debt in the, that we have occurred in the county? Can that money be used for that or not?
I want to say no, but I don't know an answer to that question off the top of my head.
Well, thank you.
Dan saying no, Beata saying no.
No, I think it has to be used for infrastructure or... Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to support Chris on choices of money well spent, and I'll just relay an experience. Today, I got back about, oh, 3:30, 4 o'clock from a fair board meeting, district meeting, and standing out in the rain by the intersection where it goes up to the neighbors is a guy with a cane and a plastic bag. And when I came back after turning in the county car and with my vehicle, and the guy's still standing there. And I says, you need a ride. And he said, yeah, could you take me up to North Menominee to the BP station? So being the inquisitive guy I am, I says, why are you out here? He says, well, I had to walk along the side of the road after being in Judge Wagner's court. And, and he's got a cane, can hardly walk, had back problems. So we talked about different medical procedures that each one of us had. So we really bonded. And I took him to, oh, and he said, I was waiting for the county bus and they told me it'd be by maybe every hour. But, so there's a need just today. Guy walked along the side of the road in the rain that needed a ride to North Menominee. And I was thrilled to do it. And my wife probably would not have because she's not as adventurous as I.
It's a bit of an anecdotal story, but similarly, I went out to visit when they were doing some of the preliminary work up for the walking path pedestrian trail and went out to talk to one of Dustin's staff. And he stopped what he was doing and we were chatting there for a bit. And he just said that he was shocked how many people you walked, had, you know, were walking along, 29. They didn't realize it until you were out there and you saw how many people were actually just walking along the side of the road.
Supervisor Willsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say I'd prefer to see this money spent on highway, so I would not be in support of this resolution. So asking for a roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote anyway, so. Perfect. Any further speaking? All right. Seeing none, I guess we are prepared to vote.
So supervisors, if you tap a screen on your microphone system, you will have the option to vote now. While the supervisors are doing that, you can choose yes, no, or abstain. Really, abstention should be only if you have a conflict of interest financially in this money. While they're doing that, Supervisor Vandermeulen, how would you vote on this? I think that was a vote yes, but you're muted Supervisor Vandermeulen.
I vote yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Thank you. We're just waiting on one final vote. But there are enough votes for that to pass. And the vote has been completed. Thank you.
Motion passes. Next on the list, item B, 2024 Budget Adjustment DHS and Health Department. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. This is a pretty typical vote that you will see a lot of. We get grant funding that comes in. It has to be allocated to the budget for us to be able to spend it. It's essentially bookkeeping to allow us to use that money which is coming in. If you want a more thorough answer of what exactly is in the package, I'm sure we can provide that for you. Any speaking? Sorry, Supervisor Lyon. I'm sorry. Supervisor Lyon.
No.
Nope, nope, just kidding.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, in that case, I guess we are ready to vote. And this is also, because it's a budget vote, a roll call vote.
So supervisors, please use your screen. While they're voting Supervisor Vandermeulen, how would you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Thank you. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes, thank you. Just waiting on one final Morehouse, I mean vote.
Didn't register.
There we go, all right, thank you all for voting.
There we go, motion passes. All, moving on to 13, consideration of reports, resolutions, and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees, committee on administration. Resolution appointing county treasurer. I'll need a motion for that Supervisor Steen.
This.
Here, ask to be the, be the person to second us stealing his treasurer. Second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Headland seconds. All right, any, Supervisor Headland, you want to speak to this or?
I can.
And anyone else can? What happened is, this happened in the past. But as you know, or should know, is that the county treasurer is one of the elected positions. County treasurer, the county clerk, and the register of deeds are elected every four years to serve the county. We had our current treasurer resign the position and take a position with the county itself, leaving a situation where then a, the board was, or the board, and then on to the administrative committee, which I chair, came up with the possibilities of what we should do. One is to do nothing and rely on staff to fill the position. Second would be to point someone, virtually hire someone, to fill the position until fall elections of this year, in which they would then, if they wish to continue that position, would have to take off papers, get nomination paper signed, file them, and then run for that position. So again, every four years, our county clerk, our county treasurer, and our register of deeds have to run for reelection to retain their positions. And so we decided that we would, in fact, interview people and see if we could fill the position with somebody qualified. We had eight good candidates. The committee narrowed it down to three interviews. Those interviews are conducted March 28th, and we picked the person who is brought up in front of you. Current position of that person is the clerk, treasurer, and administrator for the village of Colfax. She would be moving on pending your appointment and become our treasurer until reelection this fall. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know a thing about this person. And seeing that she's going to be Dunn County treasurer, why isn't the board at least introduced to this person, or did I miss that also? And as previously mentioned, when the board chair appointments, certainly looks like an advertising piece to elect the, the current chair, isn't appointing somebody to this committee prior to the election also advertising a leg up? And why isn't a level playing field? I, is it, you know, has the executive committee met this person?
This would, no, this would be a, a standard function of the administration committee. And it comes straight to the board from the administration committee.
So this is a treasurer just for the, for the administration committee? Or is it a treasurer for the county board?
That's the process by which we replace people.
Right, well, it seems to be skewed to me. I'm sorry, that's the case.
Any other speaking? Supervisor Steen.
Ah, yes, I, I think that Lynn Nigumman will do a great job for us. I hated to lose her putting on the Village of Colfax hat. I accused the, the county of rustling away from me, but they got her anyway. And I tried to convince her to stay, but, you know, she thought this is a good opportunity. She done, she has done a great job for the Village of Colfax, and I'm sure she'll do a real good job here.
Thank you Supervisor Steen, anyone else? Supervisor Larry Bjork, first, is there, it's a second speaking. So is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this? All right, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
May we meet the person?
Without objection, Lynn, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, I am Lynn Nigumman, and I come from the Village of Colfax, working there for approximately, well, I'm in my eighth year there. Prior to the Village of Colfax, I was at the City of Menominee for roughly the same amount of time and with UW Stout for about eight years. So I've been in government or state jobs for the last about 25 years. My family, it lives in Colfax, Wisconsin, which is about 12 miles from Menominee. Have a lot of experience doing all of these jobs that the county treasurer position will be, that I would be responsible for. And with communicating with the human resources, if the board approves my hiring of this job, I would be starting approximately May 28th. So any other questions for me?
Anyone else besides Larry? I, I'm just following the rules here. Okay, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Do you intend on taking out nomination papers for the fall election?
That would be the plan. That's one thing I've never done before, but obviously, if I'm taking this job, I'm giving up my, my job that I currently love to take on a new opportunity. And I'm a working mother and wife, and that's what I will be doing. So, yes.
Thank you very much, pleased to meet you.
And then Larry, I would like to address one small thing that I think will probably make you feel at least a little bit better. One of your concerns about this being an elected position was making sure that we had someone who was highly qualified. So one of the pluses to the admin committee going through having a process and hiring someone is that we are able to get someone in who is highly qualified at the beginning of the process.
All right, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
Any further speaking? All right, we are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome aboard. Find myself in my, there we go, resolution, amending the job class inventory. I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Story seconds, speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Headland.
I have Jenna come up.
Perfect.
She's did all the background work for this, without any objection.
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you Supervisor Headland. In your packet, you will see a resolution requesting to amend the inventory of job classes. And this request is to add three new job classifications to our inventory. And the first two, occupational therapist and physical therapist, come as a result of the upcoming closure of Pervaya Health, which is currently a significant provider in the region, as, as we all know. But also currently is contracted with our birth to three agency within our human services department and provides mandatory occupational and physical therapy services to the participants of that program. So with the notification of the closure of Pervaya, the human services director and the deputy director, as well as others from their management team, reviewed options with both Chris and I, putting cost at a really high priority on the list, as well as continuity of care for the participants in the birth to three program. And as a result, we are requesting for the ability to create these two positions within the job class inventory so that we can hire the two existing occupational and physical therapy providers that will be losing employment with Pervaya this month. And this request actually would come with a significant cost savings to the county compared to the other options for contracting the services externally. It would also provide the continuity of care, which is also a large concern with the participants in the birth to three agency.
Thank you, Jenna, any questions for Jenna? Supervisor Headland.
Jenna, these are both part-time positions, is that correct?
That's correct. The two current providers that are serving the birth to three agency are providing services on a part-time basis and would be interested in part-time employment to continue serving the county in that role.
Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, just a clarification on, on wording or what I'm seeing here on this. It says adding three, you were talking about adding two and removing one.
Sorry.
Am I just not catching it or getting it or what?
You're correct, I just wanted to address the first two together. And then if there aren't any further questions on that, I will move on to the, the third request.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've made a vow to myself this year that all the good ideas that come before the county board, like these ideas, I have to ask myself the question, does this grow government? And this sounds like adding new positions, new Dunn County employees, and I see that as a growth of government. Would you feel it is a growth of government? Would, I mean, is it more employees for Dunn County that we now have on the, that we pay?
So Supervisor Bjork, what this would be doing is replacing two people that we are already paying for services with the same two people. So essentially, it's, there is no change. We're taking, they've been contract employees via Pervaya. With Pervaya going out of business, we need, we are required to continue to, to supply this service. So this is the cheapest possible way to continue to supply a required service.
So we're, so we're not growing government, is that correct?
I don't think that, that I would characterize it as growing government.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pat Breslin, Patrick Breslin.
Chairman, a quick question. So Pervaya is currently the only outside entity that is supplying personnel for these two positions? Or do we have other, other contracts with other health providers doing the same thing?
There are other health providers that were looked into, and the cost of contract with those providers was significantly higher than this route. One of which being CISA, is that correct? And we, not to put you on the spot, Paula, also have our human services director here, in case you would like to have her expand on that.
No, I don't need expansion, I just, so currently, we do not have any other contracts, not looking forward.
Oh, sure, thank you for the clarification. Currently, for that service within the birth to three agency, we don't have any other providers contracted.
Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else? All right. The third one.
Yep, thank you. So the third request would be requesting to change an existing position, which is currently the nutrition program coordinator within our ADRC in the human services department. We also have our ADRC manager here tonight for those in-depth questions that I can't answer. So what is being requested is for the ability to add additional duties of higher level of responsibility to the existing nutrition program coordinator and amend the job title to become an aging and transportation programs manager. This request does come as a result of additional grant funding that has been secured by Tracy and her team and would allow them to expand on the programs offered within aging as well as a transportation program within the ADRC, which I understand has been a long, long-term goal and a long-term need of the division. The, this request would result in not only a title change, but would elevate the pay of the position, given the added responsibilities to this current incumbent and has evaluated to be placed at grade N on the Dunn County wage grid. So we are, again, requesting to amend a current position that is currently filled with a county employee to be able to add higher level of skill and responsibility as a result of new grant funding within the ADRC and to expand on the services that they provide to the residents of the county. I do want to say that any fiscal impact would be covered with this grant that has been secured.
Thank you, Jenna. I'm not seeing any questions, any further speaking? All right, we are ready to vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item three, revolution for a one-time floating holiday payout for E911. I'll need a motion in a second, you might as well stay right there. John Calabrese makes the motion. Supervisor Calabrese makes the motion, Supervisor Bauer seconds. To give you the rundown on what this means, take it away Jenna.
Thank you. So this resolution is coming forward as a request, really as an exception to the current floating holiday policy that is, currently provides all of our 24/7 operations staff with a bank of floating holiday at the beginning of each year. So with the staffing shortage challenges that the 911 center has experienced over the last three-plus years, significantly in 2023, as I have previously reported, due to that, there was an inability for the staff to be able to utilize their floating holiday within 2023. And therefore, under the current policy, they would otherwise forfeit that time. The alternative to allowing the, the staff to, to take the time off or to force them to take the floating holiday off would require management to fill the open shifts, which had already been done pretty well consistently each pay period of last year. So it became a pretty dire situation, and the staff were not able to utilize their floating holidays. And as a result, we are requesting a one-time exception for the ability to pay out those unused floating holidays from 2023. This also comes with the pledge that we are going to continue working on the retention and the filling of the vacant positions within that unit as much as we possibly can so that we don't have to request this in the future.
I was gonna say, and I will note Melissa has done outstanding service to the county, making sure that we were staffed and covering a lot of shifts. Thank you.
The anticipated cost of this one-time payout would be $5,000, 176 and 95 cents. And that is a total of 184 unused hours collectively from that whole team.
Do I have any questions? Supervisor Headland.
Um, yeah, and realistically Jenna, the $5,000 plus. Um, yeah, and realistically Jenna, the five thousand dollars plus was a carry forward from last year into this year's budget, uh, because we didn't pay it out. And so, uh, I realize it became part of this year's budget, but, uh, it's really going to be funded with carryover funds from last year.
If I could add some clarification to that, um, the, the cost of this payout will actually be absorbed within what, what was budgeted for twenty-twenty-four due to existing vacancies. Um, you know, we're in one quarter through, through the year and, um, still don't have all the positions filled. Um, so there is a cost savings there, um, but hoping to get those vacancies filled as quickly as we can.
Thank you Jenna.
Thank you.
Any further questions or speaking to the motion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote, all is in favor. Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item fourteen announcements, uh, the capital improvements workshop will be April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four at eight-thirty AM. I guarantee you, I am no happier about the hour than any of you are. And our next regular county board meeting will be May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven o'clock PM. If you have your per diem sheets, this is a perfect opportunity to turn them in. Uh, it's a good practice to turn them in every county board meeting. So any committee meetings or any orientations that you've attended, please put those on your per diem sheet. If you need help filling out your per diem sheet, I'm more than happy to help.
Do you want to talk about cows?
Yeah, we love an acronym in Wisconsin. Um, and the county officials workshop brought to you by UW Extension, AKA COWS, um, will be happening. And all the new supervisors got some information and that, in addition to that, um, I believe in your, uh, packets that are in front of you, there's, uh, Wisconsin Counties Association information, it includes the most recent up-to-date county officials handbook. Um, you also have your certificate of elections. Um, but if you are a new supervisor and you're interested in attending the county officials workshop, it's a really great opportunity. There's some, uh, training sessions that are happening in Eau Claire. Um, there should be a handout called COWS. Um, please fill that out and hand that in to me. In addition, if you have your blue annual conference postcard on the back, if you're interested in attending the, um, uh, Wisconsin Counties Association annual conference happening September twenty-second through the twenty-fourth in La Crosse, beautiful exotic La Crosse. Um, on the back, there's a sign up where you can just sign in and, um, hand this to me and we'll get you signed up for that conference. I believe that concludes our business. We are adjourned. Uh, please do check in with your, uh, committee chairs.